The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Star White House for design, construction, oversight services in connection with the Promenade Hill Park renovation project. Can I have a roll call vote please?
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next is a resolution establishing the city as a purple heart city. Can I have a roll call vote please?
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Tom, what did you say the cost was for the sign? Did you say the cost?
Yeah. I'm looking at it, it was something like a hundred dollars, a hundred fifty dollars.
How much?
Hundred, a hundred fifty dollars, I don't have it handy right now.
I would like to purchase that sign and honor my dad and my uncle who was a purple heart winner. Yes.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a transfer of funds within the fire department accounts for fiscal year 2019. A roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR. Carrie.
Okay, new resolution, of course, unlike the previous resolutions, we can discuss them. The first one appoints John Cody to the Hudson Industrial Development Agency. He is the designated of the current planning board chair who by charter normally sits on the industrial development agency. Any discussion? Can I have an introduction in a second? It's resolution number thirteen.
This would be the second one, I guess?
This would be someone sitting in the seat of the planning representative, yes, the planning representative, representative to the agency.
For Betsy, right?
Correct. Introduction in a second. Irene and Rebecca, a roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a transfer of funds within the DPW water and sewer department accounts for fiscal year 2019. Any questions? Can I have an introduction in a second please? Calvin, second. Jane. A roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR. Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to hire TGW consulting group to apply for city grants on behalf of the city. The reason we're bringing this up tonight is because we would like to get started right away. We've been without a grant consultant for some time now. Question?
Have we used the, just the pair that this uses in the past?
Yes.
Why are we bringing it back after, and is this amount, do we need RFP for this or no?
No, because the way it's set up, I don't think you need RFP. But we, the mayor interviewed a number of potential grant writers and they were found to be the most desirable for a number of reasons. Their previous, in their defense, their previous contract, their previous work with the city was difficult because they were actually hired by, not just the city, but by two agencies as well. So it made for a very difficult situation. Now they would just be hired by the city. They have no responsibilities to HDC or to CPPA. And they will, we will see them right away if we go forward with this, to start identifying the grants we want to apply for.
So they're supposed to be more active than the previous?
Yes. And they were, I mean, the one thing I recall from previous councils, previous councils, they were here a lot. And presented to the Economic Development Committee often. And that they promised to do now as well. Unlike in the past, they won't be accompanied by Sheena Salvino, who's sort of in that weird position of working for a number of different agencies.
Were they successful, Tom, in these?
They have, they have a very successful record, yeah.
I mean, with the city?
With the, for the city, yeah. They have a long, I mean, as part of their application, they showed us their record. They've gotten a lot of the major grants the city's gotten in the past.
I would like to know who were the other grant writers that the mayor said it? I know we had in the past Duke.
That's who this is.
That's who this is?
Oh, really?
Okay.
Well, one question at a time. We talked to our, the group that is doing the DRI, we talked to LeBurg, she was our recent, who had the contract most recently. Yes, Rebecca?
I don't know quite how to ask this, but, I mean, I have, I have, in my experience, there were some problems with, definitely with some of the grant writing that happened. So I guess I just am wondering how to, like, is it okay to just be like, I'd like to talk to them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I can vouch for them, I've worked with them in the past, they're easy to work with, easy to communicate with.
Yeah.
That, those were the main issues with LeBurg. They were very inaccessible.
And they cost less. Are they responsible for doing research for grants or just commissioned to write grants?
They write the grant.
So they don't do the research?
They will, they will help us, if you talk to them, they will help you identify grants that you think you would like to see the city go for. But that's decided by all of us, not by only one individual.
I guess I'm just curious, like, to have further input on what potential downsides of them were, because I, I mean...
There was just controversy in the past regarding their relationships here in the city and also the fact of what Tom described. Both for the HDC and HCPA and something overlapping with interests.
And I mean, there were significant problems with the DRI grant application in terms of how they represented things about the city and...
There ain't nothing to...
Oh, I thought you said that they were...
No, I said one of the groups we looked at was a DRI, our current DRI. The mayor's asked us to fast track this just so that we can get started with the grant application procedure. If you want to do more, to look into the various proposals before you approve it, that's fine too, but...
I have expertise in grant applications, so I feel like I should, I could just take a, are you saying that we can take a look at the people who apply and see, or you're just saying this is done and like...
Well, you could, but I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I don't know. I've heard some stuff, it wasn't so great, but...
Do I have an introduction in a second? Tiffany, second. Jane? In that case, a roll call vote.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Nay.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution, we're actually, we're gonna do this last term, but it's, authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with arterial and street plants for planning and design services in connection with the breached district, connected improvement project. So this just allows the mayor to finally sign the contract that's put in the works to proceed with the biggest part of our DRI, or I should say the largest DRI project, so I'm being controlled by the city. Any questions? Tiffany?
And the third whereas, and the number two where it says ADA accessibility and redesign of Promenade Hill, is that going to be...
Wait, hello, sorry. That just mentioned in terms of the overall DRI, this resolution does not, that'll be another, let's see, when we get to the...
So, but my question was gonna be, for all the things that are listed, or everything here will be compliant and not just the park?
Oh, yeah.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah. Do I have an introduction in a second? And Jane? A roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next revised resolution calls for a slight increase in park RFPs along Warren Street.
The only change here is fixing the typo.
Yeah, we actually introduced this last week, there was a typo saying thirty-two thousand dollars when in fact it's on our bill. So, can I have an introduction in a second? Tiffany? And Tricia, a roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution accepts another donation in memory of James Vining Jr., a member of the Hudson Fire Department. I think I pointed out last week, it was only less than a month ago that the mayor and I attended a fire department dinner in which James Vining Jr.'s father was being recognized for his seventy-four years of service. And then a week later, his son, James Vining Jr., passed away. Anyway, this is another donation in his memory for the one hundred dollars made by Al Home. Can I have an introduction in a second please? Jane? A roll call vote please. Jane and Calvin.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a transfer of funds to meet 2019 obligations. Please for just paying our bills from last year. Can I have an introduction in a second please? Rebecca, second. Tricia, roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
Resolution authorizes transfers within the youth department accounts for last year. Can I have an introduction in a second please? Irene and Calvin. A roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Is this paying, this is for all the, all the lifeguard training? Or this is for this, oh, this is for last year, not this year, okay.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution, which went before the finance committee tonight, is a budget transfer to, a budget amendment for the youth department lifeguard training. Can I have an introduction in a second please? Irene and Tricia, a roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye, and the treasurer asked at the finance meeting that we make it clear that this was something the department thought they could encumber from last year, but there's recently been changes in encumbrances and it's strictly an accounting procedure and she wanted to make sure that that was covered for tonight.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a transfer of funds within the, I'm sorry, to lease the market budget to meet fiscal obligations for 2019. Can I have an introduction in a second please? Dewan and Calvin, did I see your agenda?
Yes.
Okay. A roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga. Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR. Carrie.
The next authorizes the mayor to extend the intermunicipal agreement for the Promenade Green Shed services response team. This, I'm told, is identical to the existing agreement, which expired in December, on December 31st. Questions or introduction in a second? Number twenty-three.
I don't know the twenty-three.
Tom, can you explain exactly what shared, in this case, shared services means?
As I recall, well, unfortunately, we don't have the supporting document with this. It was, it was sent to us rather late in the day. But as I recall, it involves an ability to, we share the services and that allows us to access more funds, at least the...
So when you say shared, are they police services, are they emergency response services?
There aren't police for that.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's a structure.
Yes.
Did this go before the police committee?
It didn't.
That is part of the new rules.
Well, yes, it should go.
It should go before the police committee.
Okay. So, the motion, table it in a second for the reason.
Motion.
Second, Rebecca? All in favor, signify the same aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll table it. This... Next resolution authorizes the mayor to sign a contract for the repair of Dunne warehouse roof. Excuse me, this was discussed and the bidder was selected this afternoon by the DRI committee. This is to provide emergency repair, not even actually technically really repair, as more as protection from further deterioration of the roof. And it comes late to us because we want to get this done before further deterioration happens.
Tom, is it financed from Restore New York money?
It was financed from the Restore New York money, indeed.
It's actually just like opening a patch under the roof.
It's not even a patch really, it's kind of like an over...
Temporary covering.
Yeah.
While they shore up.
Following with Dominic's question in New York, what he just stated is saying for this?
Comes out of the...
And is this still part of the...
Technically, no, Restore is a grant we got before the DRI. But it's kind of down mingled with it, yeah. Can I have an introduction in a second please? Jane and Tiffany, a roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution. Oh, there it is, sorry. Resolution twenty-five. This authorizes a signed unappropriate fund for fiscal year 2019, this is more bookkeeping of the 2019.
Was this also the substance finance?
Yes, it was. Can I have an introduction in a second please? Irene and Rebecca, a roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
From the bottom up, number six, what is that for? It's, your cost is six hundred and five...
Six hundred and five, I don't have this, I'm just...
Bring the parts of units to the circus?
Oh, okay. Thank you. And that's part of the youth department?
Yep.
Was this Stewart's planning review, what is that? Stewart's review, planning board escrow?
That's the host...
Which one?
The host agreement.
Planning board escrow?
I just actually think that's the money that's been set aside to do any type of, the planning board has to do with the review of the escrow and account.
I thought that was the host.
It's different.
It's just, it's part of the police, correct? Chips is part of the police?
DPW.
That's, chips in the highways?
Yeah, that's the show.
Thank you.
You ready to vote?
Yes.
Got a yes?
Holleran?
Oh.
What? I thought you said you.
Oh, sorry. I got confused with the question, you ready to vote, I'm waiting to hear you, so yes, yes.
Yes, yes. Holleran.
Aye.
Louis. Veranty.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR. Carrie.
We're going to go to the local laws, first of all, a moratorium law, and a motion, and a second to enact proposed local law. Tiffany and Calvin, a roll call vote please.
Alvin Carriga.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Louis. Veranty.
I appreciate the new, the adjustment with the six months and I wish the legal committee luck in moving this forward, yes.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Trably.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presente PHR.
Aye.
Carrie.
Revised local law, amended lodging tax, we can't vote on this yet because of the revision, but can I have a motion, I'm sorry, an introduction in a second on this local law?
Can you just point out what the revision is, Tom, I just don't have the law.
I think it was actually, I think it was actually recommended by you to revision, if you recall.
Can you just remind me, I don't have the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have the most of it.
Jeff, can you recall?
Yeah, I think we changed and clarified the intent of what the money would be used for in the purpose.
Okay, gotcha.
We invented that and I also had to add, because we have to take into account a provision that would no longer be there, so section B, if they do section, which is just cleaning up the rest of the law, once we've taken out the other section, we had to take out the reference to it. So of course, we can't vote on this tonight, but we can put it forward. Can I have an introduction in a second? Rebecca and Tiffany.
And we're introducing the other local law, amending the city charter to increase the term of office of mayor.
Excuse me, wasn't that piece of document that we're discussing right now supposed to go before the legal committee?
Which?
What we're discussing now, local law on the city?
It will go before the legal committee, yes.
Before tonight is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to, as long as we would only be putting, we would only be introducing, we wouldn't be...
But the point, I mean, that was the whole point of changing the rules, of having certain legislation documents to come before the committee, before the council, and this just came out of nowhere, when it should have went to the legal committee first.
But we did discuss it at our last meeting.
We did the police committee, I mean, it's the same standard. We moved, she moved it to the police committee, I don't understand the difference. I wonder what you're talking about.
General feeling.
I'm agreeing with you.
He's agreeing with me, put that on the record and let's send it back to the committee.
I like the system.
Yes.
Sheen, you want to do?
Right, I mean, we could certainly waive that provision. And moreover, if we put it forward tonight, it would just be on our desks and it would still go before the legal committee.
Well, I make a motion to move it directly straight to the legal committee.
A second. How do you like that? Twenty-two hundred dollars.
I like that, I like that.
All those in the favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. to it, this is the proposed request for expression of interest in our, as we seek developers and investors for the Dunn Warehouse adaptive reuse. So, read it, if you have suggestions, please send them to Michael, the Mayor A, Michael Chameau. What else here? New business, anybody from the council? Tiffany?
I stated this before and I will state it again, and I don't know, because I didn't read the DPW minutes and I'm not sure if it was even discussed, but we do have a button outside of City Hall, now that we're under the gun to be ADA compliant. There's a button outside of City Hall that just says press, but no one really actually knows what it's for, and it looks like a symbol for delivery packages of some sort. And a sign needs to be placed out there so that people with disabilities, children, mothers in strollers and so forth, can know what it's actually for, whether it's for assistance from the clerk, the council president, the mayor's aide, or mayor or one of us if we're here. It's very important that we acknowledge people with disabilities and what they are unable to do and what we are able to do, and recognize that. And I suggested this before and I'm stating it again for the record, a sign needs to be posted indicating what that button is for.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council, have anything?
Yeah, since, we're, we're two for two. So, since Tiffany brought up the issue upfront, I would like to know what the update is for the ADA coordinator getting us on board. Time is ticking, we're 30 days since he's been appointed on the website, because there's legalities of identifications on the city website, including a grievance, if that, if that sign is not there, somebody can apply for a grievance.
I can answer that. What, somebody say something?
He said it.
No, I know, I can't answer that, because it's, you'd have to address it to the ADA coordinator, I guess. Okay.
Do we have one?
Yes, it's Michael Chameau. I mean, I think you have the right to ask him to attend our meeting and tell us what's up.
Well, I just think because, you know, we're the ones that were pursued and this is part of the process, so I'm just asking you if you know, since you are, but okay.
Yes, Michael's usually here, I guess he's not here today. Anyway, is there somebody else outside? Rebecca, yes.
I just wanted to also, sign related and for the record, that I'm pursuing, researching what it will take to have notification posted on the outside of City Hall, what meetings are happening during the week and what, you know, what committee meetings, what agendas, maybe in some kind of shorthand version, and so I'm just putting that on the record that I'm hoping to execute that very soon.
Well, that, that's also important, to collaborate with the sign of what the button is for, so, because we do have a sign, like I said, you know, we take advantage of what we can do and forget about what they can't do. We do have a board inside City Hall with the signs and jobs and meetings, but nothing, once again, outside for people with disabilities.
There you go.
It's very important, thank you.
Anyone else from the council? You saw various proposals that the DRI Committee has brought forth, so that you know that things are progressing suddenly with great dispatch, and I hope it continues that way. That's my report about the DRI, if you have any questions. The public, anyone? Yes, Peter Frank.
Hi, Peter Frank, I just wanted to remind everybody that in 11 days, on leap day, February 29th, is the third Oakdale Plunge to support the fire department and the youth department, and I'm happy to see that a couple of our alderpersons have committed to plunge, if they get over their colds, I hope. Tom and Jane, and Dominic is also a wonderful supporter of the Plunge. The mayor's aide is plunging, and I hope more people in this room will sign up or else support the plunge. It's oakdaleplunge.com and it's February 29th at noon.
Leap into Oakdale.
Leap into Oakdale.
Going in halfway count?
Maybe, to make an exception, maybe. Yeah, sure, yeah. We can have, we can have a demi-plunger category.
Anyone else? Abduls.
I'd like to know that everybody knows that county tried to put in a 4% lodging tax for the county. Hudson has already 4%, so some of our supervisors says 4% additional aid. I think so, it is not a good idea, whatever, we want to out the Hudson for the 4% that, I don't know, you guys think about it? Let we know how can work, work around, we have. So, 4%, it will be 8% in Hudson. So, that's the issue. So, our one of the supervisors, one 8%, so I, I'm not agree that, because I should, it should be out from the, it should be only a 4% for the Hudson.
You'd be pleased to know that that's pretty much the legal position, we do not intend to opt into that. Okay, so, that's it. Thank you. There's someone, oh, Crystal Heinz.
Yes, Crystal Heinz, fifth ward, I just, I say this, I feel like at almost every meeting, but I feel like the city needs a comprehensive plan. I think you all have some great ideas, but I think that we need a plan to look the entire city forward and not one lot by one lot and not one issue by one issue, but all of the issues that this city is facing, and I think that we need to make our decisions based upon data, which I haven't really seen happen, and I just wanted to share a communication that a client of mine shared with me in connection with the lodging tax, or the lodging registration moratorium that we voted for today. I wasn't, I know this was submitted to common council president, Mr. Di Pedro, and former alderpeople, Boujane and Johnson. I was not able to find this in any of the meetings as a communication to the city, so I just thought it was important to read it today to the public and to those members of the common council. It's from Carol Spiney, she owns 320 Union Street in Hudson, and it's regarding her perspective and some thoughts on short-term housing. I own a two-family house on the 300 block of Union Street, one apartment is currently rented full-time to a tenant that has been living there for over two years. The previous tenant owned a business in town. The second apartment is a furnished short-term rental that has a city permit and has had building department inspections. I invested in the building and the community with the idea that it would produce supplemental income and I might eventually live in one of the apartments. This is an investment for the future, not a short-term takeaway scheme. I say this because I've heard arguments that short-term rental owners are not members of the community. Frankly, this hurts, feels personally judgmental and is not true. I do live in Columbia County and Hudson is my county seat. I conduct business in Hudson regularly and was employed by Hudson, Hudson Businesses for over three years and will likely do so again. I served the city for a number of years as a member of the City Conservation Advisory Council. I use the city, the services of the city, shop in the city and eat in restaurants supporting local businesses. There are arguments put forth that the short-term housing market has destroyed the local rental market and complains that rents are too high because of short-term housing. I disagree. This is a complex economic issue and pointing at one cog in the wheel is misguided. Higher rents and rental shortages are a result of short-term rentalism that has not been substantiated. Rents may have gone up for a number of reasons. Building owners that have upgraded properties expect a return on their investment. Taxes are high and general cost of living increases across the board includes housing costs. There are also now more people that would consider living in Hudson, thereby increasing demand. The city has enjoyed and promoted an economic boom and gentrification is a natural result. At the same time, I read that the average rent in Hudson is actually in line with national rents. It is almost, the time this was written, this was almost a year 2020, and we can expect rents to, we can expect rents to be at the level of the 80s and 90s or formerly depressed rates. It appears to me that the rental rates in Hudson are not inflated. Furthermore, I read the city has investigated rent control laws, but that the vacancy rates are not low enough to merit or enable passage of these measures. Please note, it is an economic fact that rent control laws create false shortages and drive up prices of the non-regulated buildings. There are many other tools the city can employ to handle housing issues, tools beyond the scope of this letter. Short-term rental owners are incentivized to maintain their properties, the better the building and accommodation, the better the demand. If an Airbnb falls short, complaints are made and business is off. Long-term rentals do not have the immediate feedback and corrections, and buildings are generally not kept to the same degree. The short-term rental portion of the house enables me to continually maintain and upgrade the building as well as pay for the property taxes and employ help as needed. Short-term rental supply employment, I currently have two people working with me, an occasional snow removal and others for repair. I also buy local foods and goods to stock the apartment. There's a demand for short-term rentals. When this market is saturated, it will no longer be economically viable or desirable and the market will correct itself. Without short-term housing, the economy of, of the city of Hudson and outlying areas will suffer and lose business. The city of Hudson recognized the economic benefit of short-term rentals when it instituted a tax to further promote tourism and reap beneficial benefits to the city and its community. The amount of revenue that this brings to the community is known and quantifiable. Our short-term guests generally eat out and spend money in the community. The trash is full of shopping receipts and there are no groceries or dishes left behind. We often have guests that are here for local events, supporting the region, the Opera House, the Basilica, the Kirkland Inn and weddings in town. Lastly, I've heard complaints about short-term rentals that are inconsiderate of the neighborhoods, et cetera. These folks should be dealt with the same as everywhere and everyone else. We already have laws and social norms against bad actors and a right to quiet enjoyment of our homes. In the years that I have had my rental, I have had only one oddly behaved person that banged on the ceiling above. We immediately contacted her and set things right. Airbnb and other platforms have a mechanism of reviews to encourage proper behavior and reduce anonymity. The city has the authority to address negligent landlords and tenants through the police and building departments. Recently, my tenant and I have been discussing the sale of the building to her. The additional rental below would likely enable her to do so, whereas the lesser income might not. How will this moratorium impact her situation and will I be able to transfer my certificate? Thank you for consideration of these complex issues. And again, I just thought that was important to read because I hadn't seen that in my footwork.
I may, for this one, notify the public yet again, if you currently are operating.
Again, it was written in August.
Hold on, if you're currently operating an SDR in Hudson, you've registered under lodging tax, while the moratorium is in place, you will be able to continue operating your Airbnb. The main focus of the law that's been spoken about over a year now, as we're trying to get this right, is if you are a resident in Hudson and you operate an Airbnb, you live here full-time, the law that will come forward is not going to, it's designed to allow people to live here full-time, to continue to operate an Airbnb, to help them supplement their income. What we're trying to do is, is go after the problem of speculation in operating Airbnbs in a way that's unfair to other businesses, venues, hotels, et cetera, but, you know, to lay your clients' fear, we're not targeting people who operate SDRs who live in Hudson and trying to punish them for their operation.
But, I mean, it sounds as though she doesn't live in Hudson and she's planning to sell her house to somebody who does live in Hudson, which would be potentially a good thing.
Also, you know, the largest employer in the city of Hudson, the thing that really drives our economy here, it seems to be the hospital, municipal employees, et cetera, so the idea that, and of course, tourism is important to our economy, but, you know.
Yes, to the motion to adjourn?
Almost. I just want to take, I just want the council to do a little research. I remember in our last informal meeting, we had a comment from someone in the audience talking about a city manager and how that person would have that four-year term out of politics, primary focus is the city, someone that elected officials melt, and more importantly, the people can rely on, that will still be in office whether we decide to run for reelection or not. I think the, instead of extending, especially from listening to the public, extending that four-year term of the mayor, to have consideration and do some research of what the responsibilities would be for a city manager. I think that's more important to think about, and we have a lot of issues in the city of Hudson from all our constituents that we need to work on, rather than thinking about a four-year term, so beats at, at, at the beginning of this year at that.
You're killing me, because you know, I would have been researching that, you're killing me.
Oh, we're three on three now, huh? Right.
We didn't save that discussion.
And I invite you all to the Legal Committee as well, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
You're not opposed?